The town of Plainville, established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our regular town council meeting. Today is Monday, December 19th, 2022. It's 7:00 PM. You'll please stand for the pledge. I'll ask Councilman Wazarko to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. We do not have a public hearing this evening, so I will ask for approval of the minutes of our previous meeting.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the minutes of the December 5th, 2022, regular meeting.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on those minutes? Corrections, additions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Announcements and reports. Does anybody have any announcements and reports for us tonight?
Madam Chair.
Rosemary?
Yes, I attended the Library Board of Trustees last Tuesday evening. One important announcement was they do have a new youth services person, yeah, which was, her name is Cheyenne Pointon. And I know that the director and the board, I think, are thrilled. That position is filled. I think it's a very key position, so, and she seems very enthusiastic. She came to the meeting to be introduced and very enthusiastic and I think is going to be very committed to the job, so.
Great. That's it, Rosemary?
That's it, that's it.
You used to have two or three.
No, no, Housing Authority canceled for the month, yeah.
Okay. Are there any other reports tonight? I just, I have a few that I will share with you. On December 8th, I attended the Plainville Senior Citizens Center Committee on Aging. This is their monthly meeting. Right off the bat, I just wanted to share with you that both Sean and Rhonda continue to be very, very thankful to the council for the purchase of the stove and dishwasher. That was done a year or so ago, but they are actually using them now because they, you know, much of the COVID restrictions have lifted, and they couldn't be more grateful for those pieces of kitchen equipment. And they were used greatly during Thanksgiving, and I'm sure they'll be used with the Christmas dinner as well. So, thank you to the council for approving that. That was in a capital request, and they're, they're much appreciated. The Thanksgiving dinner was a huge success. There were a number of volunteers that attended. They served about 70 meals. This year, they did not have any meals where you could come and have a to-go meal, but they did deliver meals to the homebound. I guess during the COVID business last year, they did offer to deliver, that folks could come in and pick up a to-go meal, but that, that was just because of those circumstances. This year, it was a sit-down meal, and, and then they did take them to the homebound if those, those were needed. So, it was a great, great success. There's also a Christmas dinner planned, very similar to Thanksgiving. Volunteers will be needed for that, and it's a very festive time where, you know, the, the center is decorated, music, and people are in a very cheerful mood. So, they will be having a holiday dinner on Christmas Day. Three members of the senior center made cookies for our police department, and they, it's called Cookies for Cops. It's a program that they began some time ago. They brought cookies to the police department. They were tremendously appreciated. So, the volunteers at the senior center always, are always thinking of what's the next thing they could do, and they're, they're very nice, very nice people that love to volunteer and do a lot of different things. One upcoming event is on, and this seems like a long way off, but it will be here surely before we know. April 14th of 2025 will be the 50th anniversary of the senior center, so they're in the planning mode right now to try and put together a nice program for their 50th anniversary. I'm sure you'll be hearing more about that as we get closer. So, that is, that's something to look forward in two more years. Let's see, a couple more things. They're working on their capital improvement program, which they're going to be submitting some requests for some, I think it's carpeting for the office area, for the living room, and for where the pool tables are located. So, they're going to be working on those things. COVID clinic occurred. That's always very well attended. They had, that was on December 12th. They also, on the 19th of December, had Michaela's Garden Seed Packing, which is part of the Pettit Family Foundation. That was on December the 19th, so it was today. They have volunteers that come and pack, seed pack, actually put seeds in packets, and they're sold as part of the Michaela's Foundation for Michaela's Seed Program as a fundraiser for the Pettit Foundation. Couple more things. Oh, yes, they're, the bus that the senior center uses, they're actually starting to work on putting together some requests for that. I'm not sure if it's going to be in this capital or next year. I'm not sure about that. But because of supply chain issues, the cost is up around 40%. Of course, with everything else, 40% is about the number that people can expect for inflation and things. Also, because of supply chain, they are currently looking into any matching funds. They can either get from the state or the federal government to help supply part of the cost of replacing their bus. So, that's, that's a very, very important item for them. It gets used frequently. It takes folks to the doctor and to shopping and things of that nature. So, it's, it's a well-used vehicle. And so, our next meeting will be January 12th, and they said to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and a healthy New Year. And I have one more item that I, I would share with you. A few weeks ago, I met with the police chief, and he took me on a tour of the police department. As you know, the police department, I think, is about 15 years old, maybe closer to 18 years when the building was originally built. Do you remember, Chris?
No, I don't. Off the top of my head.
Yeah.
I mean, it's been 15.
Could be 20.
Yeah.
At any rate, you know, the building is, you know, used 24/7. It's, it gets a lot of, a lot of use, and the chief has dedicated some of our ARPA funding to putting some improvements in the police department. And he took me for a tour of some of the areas where this ARPA money is being utilized. And he will, once all of the areas are done, invite the council to come for a tour so that you could see what it looks like. I'm kind of seeing it before and af, the before and after, but specifically, he's improved the Robert Holcombe Room. If you, if you're familiar with that, it's a, it's a large room off of the main entrance to the police department. They're going to put in some new furniture. They're going to improve some of the space. They're going to put in some screens, some monitors, so they can do some training in there. Other areas that they're improving is the lunchroom that the officers use for their lunch and dinner, new flooring, new appliances, actually just getting things a little bit better because they haven't been improved in a long time. That's on the first floor. And then upstairs, where the, where the, where the executive area is, there's also going to be a space created for a smaller lunchroom, which will have, again, you know, microwave, refrigerator, beverage center, and that kind of thing. So, he's putting together some, it looks, it's very interesting. These are areas, spaces that get heavily used by the officers that are there, you know, around the clock, and so they haven't been improved in a long time, but it's, it's looking very, very nice. So, I just wanted to share with you. Once they're all done, I think he's going to love to have a tour, so we can go and see what the, what the final product looks like. So, yep. So, that was my report. Does anybody have anything else tonight? All right. We'll conclude with that. And, oh, one more thing. I went to the Board of Education meeting last night, last week, Monday. They approved their capital budget, which has been sent along to, have you received it? My, Andy, you've gotten it. They are looking at a little over $4 million for next year's capital budget for their request, much of which has to do with some mechanical improvements at the middle school. Actually, most, most of that has to do with that. The rest of that request is their usual technology budget they put in for computers, for the classrooms, for the, for the staff, and things of that nature. So, that's just a little heads up. That was submitted. The board approved it, so it'll be part of our deliberations once we, once we get going. And at the beginning of the board meeting, they were treated, the board was treated to some holiday songs by the choir, and it was really a very, very nice, very well done. The students did a great job. They brought a lot of liveliness and a lot of cheer, and it was, it was great. So, I did compliment them and tell them that, you know, it's always nice to, to get into the spirit of the season, and especially with choirs that can bring such beautiful, beautiful high school voices. So, it was, it was terrific. So, anyway, that was my report. So, we'll move along if there are no other reports from anybody else. Onto appointments and resignations.
Madam Chair.
May I have a motion? Yes, Mr. Underwood.
Motion to accept the resignation of John Myska as fire inspector effective December 31st, 2022.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, number two.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Underwood.
Motion to appoint John Myska as fire investigator effective January 1st, 2023.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Just a little background information. Michael, can you just give us, John is leaving one post, and then he's joining another, so maybe it could just, for the benefit of those who, who watch, wonder what we're doing.
Yeah. From what I read in, in the emails and the background material, it's just an issue of the educational and training component is too burdensome for, for John at this point in time. He'd already done the fire investigator level type training, and he just, in his letter, indicates that the 90 hours required for continuing, continuing education every three years, he's finding it difficult and finding the available time to meet those requirements. So, he's asking to step down a level to fire investigator, which he had already had in terms of certification, and it's only, I think, about 30 hours, if I'm correct. Yeah, 30 hours every three years versus 90. So, it's a significant decrease and, and more manageable for him, and will stay on staff to, to handle an investigative type level.
Okay.
So, you know, it's great to be, be able to retain him subject to your, your appointment.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Are there any other appointments, or reappointments to boards and commissions tonight that were not listed? All right. Report of the town attorney. Good evening. How are you tonight?
Good, very good. No reports.
No report. Okay. Thanks for joining us. All right. Report of the town manager. Michael?
Yes, I have a few items there, beginning with the ARPA project funding update discussion. The list of projects has been updated. It is included in your agenda packet for your review. The list includes 12 projects that have been approved for funding and are completely or nearly complete. And the next item that is ready to send to a public hearing is the self-contained breathing apparatus, the SCBA for the fire department. In particular, the brand of SCBA for the town is quoting is Scott Airpack, which is what they currently use, and the department is looking to replace 36 units along with a few ancillary items like harnesses and, and other items. The original estimate was for $300,000, but the, the quote that's also in there from Shipman's is for $346,000. But I think that, looking at other projects within the ARPA list, we, I believe, that will be certainly under in a few other areas to be able to cover that cost, which I believe is, is necessary. And there's an item under new business to establish the public hearing, which would be the next step for the January 3rd meeting. I also did talk with Chief Moschini, who's here this evening, in case we wanted to take-
Hi, Tommy.
Yeah. A moment to, to ask him for further detail, unless you want it in, under, later in the agenda when we do new business, but it's certainly your prerogative.
Um, you know, Tommy, do you have anything you'd like to share with us about what's happening? If you don't mind coming up to the podium, and then we'll be, we can just move along, and then you'll be free to, you're always welcome to stay for our whole meeting. You know that.
I, I know a little bit about the Scott Airpacks, but I, I couldn't do it justice. So, I appreciate the chief coming in tonight to give you some further detail on that.
Great. Thank you, Michael.
Yes, I'm looking for the 36 packs, packs, bottles on this agenda here. We, on this quote, we have, they are giving us, each pack gets one bottle. So, it's an airpack and one cylinder. They're giving us 36 more cylinders at no, right now at no cost. That's a savings of $41,000 if we were to buy it. What we have now was purchased about 16, 17 years ago with a grant. We've had a grant writer come in, wrote a grant for those. So, they were, they've, they've used their time, 16 years. They're, they're not repairable anymore. Of course, parts and pieces are hard to find. So, we're just trying to stay one step ahead. We've had bottles that are taken out of service, so we're a little low on bottles, but Shipman's gave us bottles to use as rentals with no price, which was very nice. So, we came up, we, we beat them up on the price the best we could. We went over it and over it, and this is pretty much the bottom line. These packs are compatible with the town of Farmington, Bristol, and Suddington. We can go there, use their air tanks. They can use ours. So, we're all compatible on what we have, which is, is very important when it comes to the mutual aid agreements we have. And I think the money that we have allocated for us, I think it takes it right off the capital budget, so it's, it's a, it's a great thing for us.
And Tommy, one more time.
Yep.
How long are these generally in use for?
Years?
Yes.
These are probably good for at least 16 to 18 more years.
Oh, okay. That's a long time.
And then, but each bottle, every five years has to be retroed. So, they hydro test those every five years.
Okay.
Sometimes they go bad. Some, most of the time, they don't. So, you might have to replace just the bottle, not the whole pack or the harness.
Right.
But it's, it's all state-of-the-art, and it's where we're going in, in the right direction.
Okay, great. And does anybody have any questions for that?
Just one, one question. Like, will these all be put to use right away, or will this be kind of, you'll start replacing as you need to?
No, they, they'll all have to go in at one time.
Okay.
So, we'll have all these, once we receive them.
Yep.
We'll have training here. We'll go to a training facility, train again, train, train. And once everybody's comfortable on it, the old ones will come completely out.
Okay.
And these will all come in. So, we're all, we're all in the same.
Okay.
I can still use, some of the old ones still have a little life to them. I can use those for training when we have our, our new people go to the academy. We can use those there, but once they hit their life expectancy, we have to kind of take them out. There's no, I asked about, you know, what do we do with these old ones, and they said there's really no market for it.
Yeah.
It's a liability thing. If the town wants to sign over liability, that we give them to some town. I don't think we're, we're in that field. It's, if, if we're getting rid of them after 16 years, there, there are times to put the rest.
Nobody else is going to want them, yeah.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Thanks, Tommy.
Thank you.
Anything else, Tom? No? Okay. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming tonight. Okay.
Thank you. My next item is an update on Honor Heights Sewer Project. So, the Honor Heights project involves the installation of approximately 5,600 linear feet of eight-inch sanitary sewer main and associated improvements, including the laterals, the manholes, roadway restoration. The sanitary sewer main will be extended from its current terminus at the Countryside Manor Condominium Complex to service the following residential streets. And I apologize if I mispronounce any of these. Provincure Drive, Castillo Drive, Washburn Drive, D'Amico Drive, Hittelman Court, Robideau, is that correct? Robideau? Drive, Hull Drive, and Shepherd Lane. So, approximately 80 residential units will be served by the proposed sanitary sewer extension. The preliminary cost of the proposed construction activities include the reconstruction of the roadway, and is expected to range between 1.2 million and 1.4 million. And this was an estimated, that was, estimate that was generated back in January of 2022, but we should have an updated construction estimate by January 3rd next year. The town of Plainville has retained the services of Tigen Bond Consulting Engineers to develop construction documents for this project, and the cost of these services has been negotiated to be approximately $67,000. And the design work on this project began October 24th, 2022, with expected delivery of bid documents on or before February 15th, 2023. The timeline for installation of the proposed sanitary sewer main is scheduled to begin in April of 2023, and the installation and temporary restoration activities are estimated to be complete by November 15th, 2023. All construction activities, including final roadway restoration, is slated to be completed by June 2024, and permanent roadway pavement restoration will occur in the spring of 2024. The engineering department has been tasked with developing the construction plans for extending the public sanitary sewers into Honor Heights neighborhood, and as part of the process, it'll involve the town council including and conducting a public hearing for the purpose of gathering information and comments on the proposal. So, it's just more of a informational point that we're moving along, and that likely this will come before the council to set a public hearing either January 17th or February 6th, in order to gather that information and keep the project on its current timeline. The next item is the Aviation Commission and the discussion of a subcommittee. So, the Aviation Commission has entertained a discussion around the formation of a joint subcommittee with members of the town council to discuss the airport lease agreement and other capital projects. And the list of Robertson's current and potential capital improvement projects include the apron repair, runway and taxiway extension, teehanger design and construction, AWAS, POPPEY installation, and if you will note, I did include some inserts there in terms of the definitions and explanations. This is sort of an alphabet soup of acronyms related to the aviation industry, and I thought it would be helpful to have some indication that the AWAS is the Automated Weather Observing System, and the POPPEY is the Precision Agreement Path Indicators. So, there's further, further detail. But those are the things that they've been working on and are in the process of implementing. The building assessment rehabilitation is one. There's a, there's a roof issue. We've got to take a look under that category. Safety and security assessment. This would include the fencing project that the FAA is going to fund. That's part of the security. The new wind cone and segmented circle are a part of that instrument or lack of instrument type of, lack of a control tower. So, that's why we have those for visual indicators. And, and this is an opportunity for, I think, a roll-up-your-sleeves kind of work session and helping, I think, the members of the Aviation Commission to coming together with David as the liaison and one other member to come together to really kind of get an understanding and a better feel for how important the lease is and getting that renegotiated in addition to planning out which projects are in the pipeline and what are on the drawing board. And again, for a new person like myself coming in, and for Andy, you know, there's a lot of jargon, a lot of information to learn about aviation and, and the airport. But we've got a gem, and we don't want to lose sight of, of what we have. And so, I think it's a great opportunity to, to come together and form a, we'd call it a subcommittee, but a, really a working, working group.
So, Michael, this should not be part of the regular, it would not be part of the regular meeting of the Aviation Commission. This is something separate from that, would be, like you said, a work session. That would be outside of their regular meeting?
Right. I would think so, and, and what would jointly, you know, fit the schedule of, of the members that are, are, you know, appointed or selected and, and, yeah, to try to come up with some, some date and time that works for all involved. Yeah.
Okay. Do you want us to get back to you about who's interested?
Yeah, I didn't, yeah, exactly. I didn't want to, you know, push it forward, other than to say that, given time for the council to think about who they might appoint with, with David, and we're going to meet with aviation tomorrow and propose some recommendations in terms of the chair and one other person, and myself and, and Andy included, and likely also to have probably the input of Robert Lee as well, and, and just from a historical background, and so.
All right. So, the council can think about if they're interested in being part of that conversation, and Dave is our liaison anyway, so Dave would probably be, occupy one spot, to say.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. So, all right. Just think about if that's something you're interested in doing, and you can let Michael know, and we'll, we'll get that rolling.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that was it, except for number four, which is the financial dashboard. So, hopefully everyone has that kind of list of expenditures and revenues. And overall, my comment is that, again, everything looks in, in line, is in line. If I can start, I'll top line, the total budget of $66,110,220 through November 30th. We've expended $30,164,61. So, that's four, 45.62% expended, which is just in line, right in line, just slightly above the two-year average of 45.49%. So, overall, right in line. And when you break it down to the general government budget, we're at, through 11/30, $12,838,473, which represents a, a percentage of 51.77% spent, which is slightly under the two-year average of 53.02%. On the Board of Ed's side, it is running slightly higher, but through 11/30, $17,321,988 for a percentage spend of 41.93. The two-year average is 40.98. So, just essentially running in, in line. The next item is the police overtime with a budget of $550,000. Currently through 11/30, they've spent $177,440. The two-year average is 266,701. So, there's approximately, to date, 32.26% expended, and obviously, less than the two-year average by a significant margin of almost $90,000 at $89,261. So, that's tracking well at this point. But again, it's early and not even reached the halfway mark. So, we'll continue to monitor this and, and others. Roadways overtime, a budget of $76,895 through 11/30. They've spent $30,568, which represents a percentage of 39.75%. Their two-year average is $50,784. So, roadways is under by $20,216. And again, you know, any, any given week, as we head into the winter months, we dodged a bullet once, I think, knock on wood. I think we might be dodging another one this weekend, but you never know. This, this weekend or Friday storm has the impact, has a potential impact of high winds, so that could cause some, some problems. But, and again, we'll continue to log this, but at this point in time, roadways is, is running under in terms of their overtime budget. Buildings and grounds is running a little bit over. They're at $17,000 of their $25,000 budget. Their two-year average is $14,432, so they're over by $2,605. And I don't have the level of detail yet. Be talking with superintendent tomorrow, but I just think that is probably attributed to just the, the fall park cleanup, pool closings, and, and things of that nature. Maybe it was some other issue in terms of calls that they received, but I just, I'll try and get the detail for that. But that, that doesn't alarm me, and I'm sure there's a plausible explanation on, on that one as well. So, we'll keep an eye on that one. Roadways, snow, nothing to report, nothing recorded yet. Buildings and groundways, snow, overtime, nothing to report. Next is the tonnage for municipal solid waste, which happy to report that that is running under as well as of 11/30, 22, 2,465 tons versus the two-year average of 2,745. So, under by 280 there. So, that, that trend is also positive for us. The recycling tonnage, the same. The numbers through 11/30- The numbers through 11/30 are 545.17, and the two-year average is 621.87. So a difference of 76.70 there, running, you know, with respect to the, under the two-year average. Next is the revenue side. All revenues thus far through 11/30, 22, $34,083,992. So we've received, a percentage received of 51.89, which is just slightly above the two-year average at 51.70. So everything running right in line there with all revenues. The current taxes also in line, just running, yeah, actually running a hair above as, as well with through 11/30, $29,387,418. Percentage received, 59.997, and the two-year average is 59.18. So again, right in line. And nothing to report, nothing changed on the undesigned, unassigned fund balance. So those numbers haven't changed. It's waiting the audit report with those numbers. So hopefully, January, February, we'll have a report on those numbers. Special funds, recreation fund budget expenditures. They are up for, through November 30th, $127,152. So the percentage spent is 47%. It is above the two-year average, as I've been stating, because of the COVID. And that plays out when you look at the revenue side, which is up consistently over 10% more than the two-year average at November 30th, recording $73,469. So it's 37.83% versus the two-year average of 27.31. So everything in line there in terms of in line, meaning getting back to normal, so to speak. Robinson Airport expenditures, a budget of $86,050. And through 11/30, they've spent $24,862. Percentage spent representing 28.89%. Their revenue side, obviously different, as I noted the last time, because of ARPA infusion. That is why that number is, is, is much larger than you would see because of the $250,000 that was added in there. And so that falls to their fund balance, which you see is very healthy at this point. $335,205 for Robertson Airport. The Water Pollution Control Authority Facility Budget Expenditures, $4,245,107. That's their budget. Through 11/30, they had expenditures of $2,723.5. Their percentage spent is up 64.14. And that's, that's 12% over the two-year average of 52.10. And the note there is that it's directly related to the loan increase in loan payment year over year on that expenditure side. On their revenue side, also through 11/30, $4,632,165 raised. 112%, 112.34% above the two-year average. But again, the note there in talking with, with Rob Buden is that it is more in line with the budget revenue expectation of 4.1 because there was a difference, I believe, in the accounting of the accrued versus the cash. So if you back that out, it's right in line with where they should be in terms of, of revenue projections for 4.1. So everything in line there. WPCA, the Plainville Library Budget Expenditures. They have a budget of $763,461. And through November 30th, they've spent $318,975 for a percentage spent of 41.78%, which is under their two-year average of 46.07%. So they're running under there. And their revenues are right in line through November 30th, $341,117. Percentage received, 47.13%, just slightly under the two-year average of 48.67%. So again, happy to report everything pretty much right in line with estimates. And the final is the, the major projects report. The road bond fund to date has expended $7 million, of the, of the, I'm sorry, the, the budget bond of $10,636,905. The expenditure to date of $7,936,531, with a project balance of $2,700,374,000. And 74.61% complete. And that, there are no more outstanding projects that we're working on this, this season. I believe the message I had from the engineer was that everything was, was wrapped up, including if you go to the bottom line, town line road construction, which was just wrapped up. So that'll be reported next, meaning 100% complete there. They finished that up. Jumping back up top to Wheeler Project is finished as well. But it's just, it's sitting there because, and, and not closed out because we have not yet received the reimbursement. So unfortunately, it's just going to be one of those items we, we carry and wait for the state to reimburse. The high school turf maintenance fund is a project balance of $179,562. And ARPA is $5,189,198. And of that expenditures to date, $2,542,702, with a project balance of $2,646,496. And currently expenditure or project complete of 49% with respect to that. So we're about just almost nearly halfway through in terms of the ARP of funding dollars. And I think that's it for major projects as well. Any questions?
Any questions on our financials? Okay. Thank you.
And that leads us right into happenings. Andy?
Great. Yeah, thank you. So just a few happenings to report at the meeting today, all from the Senior Center. So for any programs pertaining to the Senior Center, you can call the Plainville Senior Center at 860-747-5728. And all programs are free and open to the public unless otherwise indicated. So the first event is grandparents raising grandchildren. This will take place tomorrow, Tuesday, December 20th, at 10:30 a.m. Grandparents or relatives who are raising a grandchild, niece, or nephew are welcome to join the support group at the Senior Center, where resources, ideas, and common joys and challenges are shared and discussed. The Tofflon School Choir Holiday Concert, which is a concert at the Senior Center, will be on Wednesday, December 21st, at 10:45 a.m. Fourth and fifth graders from Tofflon Elementary School will be joining the Senior Center, and community members are welcome to join, to listen, to sing along, and to attend. And, oh, Chairmanwoman Puglisi mentioned the Christmas dinner at the Senior Center. So that's on Sunday, December 25th, at noon, and doors open at 11:30. If you'd like to register, please do so by Tuesday, December 20th. And if an individual is homebound, they will be delivering meals to the home. Just make sure you call the Senior Center and, and, you know, let them know of your request. The last event is the dental clinic. So the Community Health Center Mobile Dental Clinic will be offering preventative dental services by appointment on December 28th and 29th of 2022. This is at the Plainville Senior Center. Services include x-rays, cleanings, fluoride, and oral health education. For patients with no dental insurance, a standard fee of $30 for cleaning, x-rays, and fluoride apply. To schedule an appointment, you can call Monica Casely at 475-471-5011. And that is all.
Okay. Thank you both for your report. Does anybody have any comments or questions for either Michael or Andy with their information tonight? Okay. Well done. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to item number nine, public comment section. During this time, we welcome the public to come to our podium to speak to the council. Please state your name and address. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Does anybody wish to speak to the council? John?
No. John Kissler, 65 Forest Hill Avenue. Looks like I'm the only one here tonight, and good thing I showed up because it gives you a reason that you can't cancel this part of our meeting.
They won't do that.
Because there is one person in town who cares. Anyway, it's cold and windy tonight, but I figured I still had to come out here at the end of the year and wish all of you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And I do have a couple items, good ones. Is Dave Emery still the superintendent of Building and Grounds, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I want to give them a little plug. I noticed tonight their budget was a little high, but with all them Christmas decorations, I mean, they did a great job in town. Those things are all over the place. And that had to take them a lot of time. Maybe they ate up some of the time. And they do a great job at the parks. I took some walks around the parks. I mean, the trash barrels are spread out all around. None of them were overflowing. They had very little in them. Pottery Wiskey was the same thing. Place was clean. It was perfect. I didn't see anything out of place. I walked one-third of the pond. I didn't see anything wrong. Even that new storm drain coming in there, I saw no signs of oil. That made me happy because people were telling me that's a problem, and I didn't see one. So anyway, I want to give those guys a plug. And the other thing I have is the people, employees who do the minutes of meetings, they do a great job. I'm on a list with the town that I get emails for everything. Every meeting, minutes, agendas, and everything else that's going on. Do the council members get that too? If, if you don't, you should get those because these minutes can inform you of a lot, a lot of things. I want to give a couple people a plug. Jennifer Dalstrom is, is really good. And Tina Gregus, when I was on the building committee, the building committee's not meeting anymore. So it's not, the minutes are so good, you, you don't even have to attend a meeting. It's like you're there. And the same thing with the Board of Ed. With Joan Calistro, if you go to that meeting, it's like you're reading a book. Her minutes are so complete. And this council should look at some of them. And the main one I want you to check, Mark DeVoe did them. It's for the Conservation Commission meetings, their last meeting. I think you'll be interested in some of the topics in the meetings, that they're really good. But, you know, I, I wish that you guys would sign up for it. And I wish that somewhere in the town, that they can make some advertisement to encourage people to do this. I told some people about it, and they were going to call Lisa. But that's something that's important. People want to come to these meetings. At least they can find out by the minutes, they can learn a lot of things. So it's just a suggestion. Oh, yeah, one more thing, at Pottery Wiskey Park, the three grills in the pavilion, one of them, the bottom, is completely burnt out. And that's not building grounds problem. There'd have to be some money provided for the town to fix up that one grill because it gets a lot of use. Thank you.
Okay. Merry Christmas to you, John. Yep, you're welcome. There, there are no other members of the public here tonight, so I'm, I'm going. Tommy's here. We already heard from you, Tommy. So, not that you don't count, but. So I'm, I'm going to close the public comment section and move along. There is no other old business. We have two items for new business. So may I have a motion for the first one, please?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Underwood.
Motion to establish public hearing regarding ARPA funds. Michael, do we need a date on that?
Here, this is the motion.
Thank you.
Yep.
I didn't get that.
You didn't get the full one.
Motion to establish a public hearing in the municipal center at 7:00 p.m. on Tuesday, January 3rd, 2023, to hear public comments regarding the use of coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds associated with the American Rescue Plan Act.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number two.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Underwood.
Motion to approve the tax refunds as listed on the addendum.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Hearing, none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Very good. Other discussions of interest. Michael, do you have anything?
Yeah, just one quick one. I, I think that I mentioned at the last meeting the landfill and closure process, that, that after December 5th, there could possibly be trucks and coming, but there aren't yet any trucks coming. But they're still working through that process in terms of locating loads and, and material, if you will. And I, I doesn't, I'm not sure if I, if I recall that, if I gave an answer to Counselor Zarco on the deadline. There is no deadline in, in terms of that. And to Counselor Underwood's comment on Leaf, we're working in that, that plans in terms of incorporate those, those things. So we're working on that. We're meeting on a regular basis to hammer through the process. And again, being, just trying to remain optimistic that it, it's a process that could happen, be completed for 2023, and fingers crossed. So we're working on it. That's all.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? I would just like to wish everybody here and the staff that's not here, the police department, the fire department, and all those people we depend on so very much to keep our town in good shape. Wishing you all a very Merry Christmas and a happy and healthy New Year. And let's wish for good things for 2023. And of course, to my colleagues here on the council as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Merry Christmas. Very welcome. Anybody else?
Yes, Madam Chair. I would also like to include the staff at Nutmeg TV.
Oh.
They're doing a great job.
Good job. Very well done. Okay. Anybody else? No. Okay. We do not have an executive session scheduled tonight, so I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Underwood.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.